Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our School Board Work Session this evening. All School Board members are present and we do have a quorum. We're going to have everyone please stand as we have Ms. Shelley lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Ms. Shelley. We are at 1.03. We have the agenda in front of you. The chairs would entertain a motion to adopt or approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Blaine.
Second.
Second by Mr. Twig. Any unreadiness? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries seven zero. We have Section Two, our fiscal year 2020 budget public hearing. Dr. Martin.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The budget public hearing provides an opportunity for the public to make comment prior to the board's approval of a budget for the 2019-20 fiscal year. At this time, we ask that speakers limit their comments to those pertaining to the upcoming budget or the budget process. School board policy requires speakers to state their name and address or voting district for the record. Students must state their name and school. Each speaker's allotted five minutes and we ask that you please address the board. Our first speaker is Marcy Fields.
My name is Marcy Fields. I live at 11914 Sandy Hill Court and I'm in the Chancellor District. Good evening Chairman Braswell, members of the School Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, and any Board of Supervisors that may be watching this evening. I truly appreciate the opportunity to stand before you this evening in support of our Superintendent's proposed budget. I am a parent of two students that attend Spotsylvania County Schools and I am also an employee of the School District and serve as the proud principal of Courthouse Road. As a working, as a parent working in neighboring district years ago, I did not always appreciate the needs of the Spotsylvania County Schools. As a principal in this district, my perspective has changed greatly. Additional funding that's afforded to our neighboring districts to our north makes quite a difference in the level of support and financial compensation provided to employees. Thus, it affects the quality of education for our most important commodities and those are our children. Our schools are changing rapidly and you know that. While our enrollment has stayed about the same or even decreased just a little bit, our needs are multiplying. So I speak tonight from the lens of Courthouse Road. It's a non-titled school, great parent support, with many of my fantastic staff members and parents in support of my message. In reading through the summary of investments and student supports that the Superintendent has proposed, I cannot think of one thing that is not necessary for student progress and future success. I really want to thank you, Dr. Baker, for the proposal of the 5 percent salary increase for all of our employees. My staff is fantastic. They work hard. Seven days a week, no doubt, ten hours a day at the least. Dedication, stamina, passion, expertise. We must stay competitive. As the 12th largest district in Virginia, we are not competitive. Our students deserve continued educators like this. They are, we need to be committed to their learning and growth. We want to thank you tonight on behalf of the custodian issue. Their rate of pay must increase. We are losing them left and right to our surrounding districts and this has hurt Courthouse Road this year. We have lost 2.5 out of our 4.5 allotment, all while our head custodian was out on medical leave. Our maintenance department worked really hard to try to give us subs, but we unfortunately many times were left with 1.5 sub positions in the evening, leaving moldy water fountains, moldy sinks, urine stained carpets, and filthy bathrooms. My very own teachers were coming in early and staying late to vacuum and dry mop the hallways. This wasn't good for our students. It's not good for our staff members. We'd like to thank Dr. Baker for proposing 14 more counselors and 14 more social workers to our school. As you know, the mental health needs of our students are increasing. Out of our 815 students enrolled, non-titled school, great parent support, at least those that we know of, 305, which is 37 percent of our students that we know about, have suffered at least two or more adverse childhood experiences and 13 percent of those that we know about have experienced four or more. Our top reported adverse childhood experiences at Courthouse Road are domestic abuse, incarcerated parents, emotional and physical abuse, and sexual abuse. Many of these students have suffered more than I ever will in my lifetime. Lastly, Dr. Baker, I thank you for proposing additional paraeducators, special education teachers, special ed paras. As a special ed teacher, this sits close to my heart. This is a vast need and has been for a very long time. Research has always shown the power of early intervention for struggling students, yet those that are very students are the ones not getting the level of support they need. I see it every day. In regards to special education, our building alone has 13 percent of our population requiring academic supports for students, not including those students on a 504 plan or students that are speech language impaired. With this, that brings our numbers to 20 percent of our student population needing academic specialized support. Our wonderful case managers cannot support that specialized instructions when their caseloads are high. These students deserve the highest quality, not minimal, not minimally pieced together support. In the words of Dr. Baker, "The expectation levels, unfunded mandates, and accountability requirements pertaining to services we provide have never been higher. The increase in expectations and unprecedented accountability requirements have not been matched or even balanced by funding commitments." Thus, we strongly support Dr. Baker's proposed budget with the increased amount of compensation and additional resources and truly hope you will fully support that as well. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Susan Faulner and I have resided in the Livingston Voting District for all of my life. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak out in support of Dr. Baker's budget proposal this evening. I will ask that the, that the School Board and any members of the Board of Supervisors watching support this plan as well. To tell you a little about myself, I work full-time in a local salon and have children that range in age from nine to 24 years old. I have volunteered within the school system of Spotsylvania County for nearly 20 years. In this time, I have regularly done in-classroom teacher assistance in many forms, from one-on-one help with students to this-year PTA president at Robert E. Lee Elementary School. This knowledge does not even pretend to qualify me as an expert on the ends of, ends and outs of this budget process. However, I do feel it has given me a different perspective of what actually goes on every day within our school system, as well as helped me, helped me to become passionate about some things that I feel are greatly needed to give our children the best educational environment possible. There are a few things that stand out immediately to me in the proposed budget priorities listed. The first goal by Dr. Baker is to attract, retain, and invest in high-quality teachers and staff. Over the years, I have had the privilege of working with some amazing people within this field on all levels of our school system. In order to achieve this goal, a pay increase would be, be at least the start. To even consider any less of the increase suggested in this budget would be shameful in my opinion, when, when each individual is deserving of so much more. I hope this increase would be broad enough to include every staff member such as administration, support staff, bus drivers, and more. Like many parents, I believe education starts at home, but as we all know, this is not always a clear path. On a daily basis, our administration, teachers, paraeducators, bus drivers, and others become a second family to some, a counselor to many, a babysitter, and sometimes even unfortunately a referee, along with having to do their own daily assigned tasks. Aside from taking money from their own pockets for much-needed supplies, most spend countless hours before and/or after school and even on weekends just to keep up. Many have stepped up to volunteering their own time with me as well as others to help pull off great events for our students and for our community. Please understand, my point in this is not solely salary. To gain improvement in the earlier mentioned educational environment, a greater support system is needed as well to lessen these daily challenges they face every day. Staff that is hoped to gain from this proposed, proposed budget, such as full-time social workers versus a currently shared one at our school, paraeducators to help with remedial reading and math skills, and extra guidance counselors would only begin to lessen these challenges. I feel my children and others would greatly benefit by allowing teachers to spend more time focusing on the daily tasks at hand. These few minutes tonight are far from enough to mention all of the key points that I believe are very deserving of discussion, like the major shortages of substitute teachers and bus drivers in our area, as well as the continued work with maintenance for additional security features on our schools. Having immediate family previously working in similar style programs out of state also piques my interest in the proposed Future Educators Academy. As long as, as long as this is not, not selective and would be available to our rural portions of the county, I am eager to becoming more familiar with this project as well. In closing, my hope is that Dr. Baker's budget will be the first step in the right direction to giving our children and staff the tools we need to achieve success. Thank you and have a good evening.
My name is Crystal Ellsworth and I reside at 5409 Steeple Chase Drive. Good evening Chairman Braswell, members of the School Board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, and any Board of Supervisors that may be watching. I'm a proud first grade teacher at Courthouse Road Elementary. Not only do I teach 19 six-year-olds, I am also a counselor for my students who come into my classroom in tears in the morning because something happened at home. I provide accommodations in my classroom that should be provided by a special education teacher or para. I'm a part-time math specialist because we believe in having a reading specialist at every school, but not a math specialist. I am also a custodian because almost all of our custodians quit or moved to, moved to other positions. And the list could continue because we all know that I, like everyone else, join this profession because we are dedicated people that will do anything it takes to provide the best education for our children that enter our classroom every year. If you ask me, Dr. Baker is asking on the moderate side and should be asking for more to compensate for all of the extra duties that are not in our, on our job description. I come before you today to insist not ask for the recommendations of Dr. Baker to be enthusiastically supported by this board. I, like every single teacher I have the privilege of working with, not just in my school, but in this profession, goes over and above the call of duty on a daily basis to provide for not only the educational needs of our students, but for the health, welfare, and custodial needs of our students as well. For years, teachers have stood before boards just like this to respectfully request, if not beg, for assistance to do the very jobs we are hired to do. It is not our responsibility to go over and above, but I confidently speak for each and every one of us that we consider it our duty. Our students are our passion. Please listen to the recommendation of Dr. Baker. You are always welcome to spend a day in my classroom, hug the students who are starting their day hungry, or scared, or concerned that their parents are getting a divorce or can't pay the mortgage. Sanitize the classroom every single day after class upon the outbreak of the flu or hand foot or mouth or any of the, any, any number of diseases that infect my classroom. At the end of the day, make sure you head out to purchase the supplies that the school cannot provide on the budget allowed, and then you may understand our plea for these necessary additions to our schools. We want to make sure our children are educated, safe, and healthy. It takes a team. We cannot do this alone.
Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, and any Board of Supervisors that may be listening tonight. My name is Trey Talmadge and I'm the President of the MassiPonics Band Parents Association, live in the Lee Hill District, and I'm back. Throughout this budget cycle, I've spoken in this forum to many and many of you individually about funding for our high school band programs. We've discussed specific reasonable items that could be addressed in this budget. Items that would be commensurate with funding for athletics and other school activities. I've also been in communication with all of the county band directors and many band parents throughout the county. We're very pleased to see the additions have been made in this year's budget to support transportation and uniform costs for our bands and would certainly encourage the Board members to approve Dr. Baker's budget. However, tonight I'm not here to talk numbers. We've done enough of that. I'm here to talk about what you're going to get for this investment. Do you believe that academics are important for our kids? Takes no more than a quick Google search to find study upon study that demonstrate that music performance has a direct impact on learning. Music has many of the same constructs as math and language arts. However, it's more than that. Performance of music activates the brain in a way that few other activities do. It develops memory and reasoning skills. I've spoken numerous band parents who have told me that their kids' grades have improved after becoming involved in band at both middle school and high school levels. Do you believe athletics are a important part of student development? Marching band is a team sport where every kid is a starter. There's nobody on the bench in a marching band. Every person in the band must perform their role well for the band to succeed. Our students learn about teamwork, competition, and working toward a common goal. It also provides significant physical activity and develops coordination skills. I defy anyone in this room to convince a student who's been marching for three hours with a 50-pound sousaphone that he's not getting exercise. Do you believe the school spirit is important? At last week's meeting, the board discussed the reasons why schools have names rather than simply being testing centers. Band is the outlet through which our students express that school spirit. They wear the uniform proudly and represent their schools well. For many of our students, band is the best part of their day. It's what gets them out of bed in the morning. It provides their niche, their school family, their sense of belonging to something larger than themselves. Finally, do you want students to be prepared for life after high school? Band students learn every day the value of practicing a craft. They learn that the only way to get better at something is to work at it. They learn it's okay to ask for help when they need it. And they learn that they can achieve success in the things that they set out to do. Some even find a career as a musician or a music educator. So how's that for an investment? The term "well-rounded" gets thrown around a lot and I'm not even sure we would agree on what that term means, but I'll say this instead. Our band students are gaining the skills, habits, and values that they need to be successful, that they need to be successful both in and after high school. I thank you again for your interest and support of our band programs. I ask you again to, to pass Dr. Baker's budget as it's proposed, and I'm looking forward to seeing these funds become a lasting reality for our students. Thank you and good night.
Lori Hayes.
Good evening. I'm Lori Hayes. I live at 10805 Samantha Place. I'm the First Vice President of the MassiPonics Band Parent Association. First, I want to applaud the board's willingness to entertain providing financial support to area marching bands. I really do appreciate that. Your desire to correct, correct an inequity is very much appreciated. By supporting the marching bands, financially, you're sending a message to the entire community that the marching band programs are worthy of funding. If you were to watch these bands, as Trey suggested, practice and compete, you would agree that the marching bands are equally a sport and should be afforded the same financial consideration as the other sports are. I am grateful that the budget shows movement towards adopting that point of view. I believe extracurricular activities are beneficial to students and are an integral part of making a more balanced education. Developing skills like team building, problem solving, time management, and leadership will serve them well into adulthood. These skills are obtained through a marching band program. I know that when faced with difficult budget, budget decisions, the arts are often the ones that get the axe. But I do want to personally tell you that I have seen how music affects academics. It makes a difference. It, it is, it is something that is really part of the overall education of a student. So if we are really valuing putting out a, a good product, which is a good education here, we need to be invested in the marching band programs and in the arts overall. So I commend you for, for including marching band in your budget. I really do, and I support the budget and I hope you all will too. Thank you so much.
So I'm having a little difficulty with the name for our number six speaker. I'm gonna take a stab at it. Is it Earnhardt? Did I do okay? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jack Earnhardt and I'm one of two drum majors for Riverbend High School's Emerald Soundening Guard marching band. Marching band is more than playing at football games and going to competitions. It's a way for students to build solid relationships with their peers as well as faculty mentors. It is also a way for students to connect with their school. Fortunately, marching band has a high financial cost for families. Though we hold many fundraisers throughout the year, a participation fee of $425 per student is necessary in order to cover basic expenses for one season. We respectfully ask that Dr. Baker's proposed funding for marching band transportation and uniforms remain in the budget. This will help reduce participation fees and enable more students to join the marching band programs. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Melissa Curdy? Cutie? Of course it's Cutie, right?
Good evening. My name is Melissa Cutie and I reside at 5400 Level Crossing Drive. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Courthouse Road Elementary School and I have had the privilege of teaching kindergarten at my wonderful school since December of 2011. I could stand up here all night and talk about all the great things my colleagues and this school have done. I'm so very proud to be a Cardinal. What I'm not proud of is the way our schools have been funded every single one of those years. The teachers in my school and in this county are faced every year with more and more challenges, higher and higher expectations, and yet the budgets have barely increased since 2009. The world our children live in has changed dramatically in the last decade, yet the funding has not come close to reflecting those changes. The number of English-language learners has nearly doubled, the special education population has increased by 14 percent, and the number of students considered to be economically disadvantaged is up by 40 percent. Dr. Baker's budget speaks directly to these issues with allocations for more teachers, more paraeducators, and increased staffing in both special education and English language learning. Our students are the future of this county. The students we teach in our classroom will be the workforce that sustains Spotsylvania County in the upcoming years. If we fail them, we fail our community. The teachers I know pour their hearts into their jobs. They spend countless hours away from their families, far more than just the school day schedules. They attend professional development, after-school activities, curriculum nights, concerts, school beautifications, and so much more. In just a few years, my own children will attend Courthouse Road. I have no doubt that they will receive a great education, but it saddens me to know how many qualified and fantastic teachers may have moved on before my children have the opportunity to sit in their classrooms. Teachers are not being fairly compensated and it's forcing them to leave for surrounding counties, out-of-state jobs, or just leave the career altogether. Currently in Virginia State, teaching salaries are $9,300 below the national average. $9,300 below the national average is unacceptable. Our students and teachers and support staff in this county are not average, they are exceptional. They are held by Dr. Baker, the administrators, and this community to very high standards and should be compensated fairly. There are far too many teachers unable to make ends meet, working second jobs, and some even applying for assistance. This is not okay. I myself have a second job to be able to have enough to cover my bills. Much of the money I earn at that second job is spent on my classroom. Saying that out loud seems ludicrous. I am working a second job to help fund resources for my classroom. Just let that sink in for a minute. But let me be very clear. I love teaching. I love my students. I love being a Cardinal and I am a proud employee of Spotsylvania County. I ask everyone sitting before me to truly consider supporting Dr. Baker's very carefully crafted, needs-based budget. Supporting this budget means supporting our students. Without increased funding, our schools and students will never be able to fully reach their potential. It is time to fund Spotsylvania's future. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Dolan. I live in the Cortlandt District and tonight I stand before you as a citizen, as a parent, and as an employee in support of Dr. Baker's budget. I want to offer you a few thoughts regarding the specific proposal that adds 14 school social workers and 14 school counselors to our staff. The most recent research that we have states that one in every four of Virginia's children have a diagnosable mental health disorder. One of every four of Virginia's children. There's a growing body of research that makes it increasingly apparent that adverse childhood experiences are a critical issue to all aspects of our society and well-being. Nationally, one of every three children have three or more adverse childhood experiences. The effects of those toxic stressors can be substantially buffered by a safe, stable, and supportive relationship. The school social work team and the school counseling team have expertise that are needed to help our system to address these needs. From October to December of 2018, the current 20 school social workers, 13 of which who have the highest level of licensure as licensed clinical social workers, supported 1,812 of Spotsylvania County students, providing over 3,500 clinical interventions. We reported that 60 percent of those students made progress in areas such as attendance and social-emotional learning. Over 1,000 individuals were supported through Treasure House, which is a school social work initiative that supports the basic needs of our most vulnerable population and actually addresses that through making connections to families and children. Adding those 14 requested school social workers and those 14 requested school counselors specifically addresses those particular needs and increases the ability to provide interventions that support our children in this county. I ask you to carefully consider the intensity of the needs that we are seeing in Spotsylvania County and put the services and supports in place that will directly impact the health and well-being of our children.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Stone. I am a resident of the Salem District. I am the proud mom of a junior in the Chancellor High School Lightning Regiment marching band. I'm also part of the parent board. I also happen to be a kindergarten teacher at Smith Station Elementary School. Dr. Baker, on behalf of Chancellor's Band as well as all marching bands across the county, I would like to thank you for considering the needs of our band kids in your proposed budget for next year. As you already know, transportation and uniform costs are currently covered through numerous fundraisers as well as band parent fees. Any financial assistance that marching bands can receive for these two very large line items is greatly appreciated. Mr. Braswell, your comments following Dr. Baker's budget presentation centered around the theme of relationships. This is a theme that deeply resonated not only with me, but I can guess with many band parents across the county. You spoke of your support not only of athletics, but of all extracurricular activities, and you went on to say that important relationships are formed by being part of these activities. This really hit home for me. My son, who's with me tonight, plays clarinet in the marching band. He's not a natural joiner. I urged him at the start of his high school career to give marching band a try. He's not an athlete and I told him, "You must be part of some kind of activity," with some reluctance. With some reluctance, he gave rookie camp a try. Although downright exhausted and a bit unsure, he said he would like to join. We went to the freshman parent meeting and signed him up. Tuesday evening summer practices began. Later in the summer, the 12-hour-per-day band camp week occurred. From practices to football games to competitions, my son has formed relationships with peers he likely would not otherwise have formed. I am very thankful for this. My son also has an extraordinary relationship with his band director, Mr. Ryan Adair. Mr. Adair knows my son on a personal level beyond just being a student in a class. The extra care and concern between a teacher and a student in an extracurricular activity such as band has been extremely beneficial for my son. Finally, I would like to say I've even strengthened my own relationship with my son as his mom. I go to football games, not for the football, but to listen for the band and cheer for my son. My involvement with band activities soon morphed from helping out to actually being on the band parent board. A huge bonding experience occurred when I chaperoned the band's trip to New York City last spring. I have thoroughly enjoyed this time spent with my son as well as all of the band kids, and a few of them even call me Mama Stone, which I secretly love. Relationships. On behalf of all band parents, thank you for supporting the relationships that occur by being a part of marching band. I urge you to vote in favor of Dr. Baker's budget that supports marching bands across the county. Thank you.
I live in the Lee Hill District. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's spoken so far. I'm not often at a loss for words, and being at a loss for words won't stop me from speaking, you'll find. But I'm just amazed at what I'm hearing already tonight, and I only regret not bringing my own posse to stand when I speak. I want to speak out, obviously, in support of this budget. I think that this budget addresses the needs of today's student, and it really addresses the needs that I've been hearing in here and in the community over the past year or so. This is a budget that I believe keeps the student in mind. But I've been... All right, now I'm a little overclenched. Okay. I've spent a lot of time with this budget. I went much too much time, considering it's a hobby, and really, there's nothing that I've seen that can't be linked directly to student success. More teachers, more counselors, more social workers, more paraeducators, more safety and discipline staff. These are more eyes on the playground, in the classroom. These are more people who can catch incidences of bullying and do something about it. These are more people who can address safety and keep our kids in a safe learning environment. These are more eyes and ears on student needs. When you talk about some of the learning challenges that kids face today, whether it's because of ACEs or the increasing number of kids who are being diagnosed with dyslexia, you have to see those things in order to get those kids help. Somebody mentioned the statistic of one in four students having a mental health issue. The average amount of time it takes for a child's mental health issue to appear and for them to get help is much too long these days, and the people who are spending seven hours a day, 180 days a year, with these kids can be part of that solution. And so more eyes, more ears, I am definitely in favor of. I really just think this budget keeps success in mind. I do want to say specifically something about last Wednesday's meeting, and that is that I heard questions about an arbitrary line above which or below which people may or may not get raises. And it was weird to hear that, sitting in a room full of people who I think fell above that line but who are spending their fifth and sixth hours sitting out here, listening to and learning about the budget. Those are people who have worked hard, who experienced the exact same health insurance increases, who experienced the exact same cost of living increase. Inflation doesn't look at you and say, "Well, you make a certain amount of money; I'm not going to hit you this year." It hits everybody. And Ms. Phelps, you brought up the concept that coaches who have more experience, who have, I think your phrase was, who have put more sweat into the athletic programs at their schools, get the same stipend as those who are new to coaching. And that says to me that you value experience and you value the commitment that people have made over time. And so to draw an arbitrary $100,000 line to determine the amount of a raise that somebody gets, I just want to say that I don't think we should be thinking that way about the people who are giving Wall Street-level hours to educating and supporting our students. Thank you for your time, and please support this budget with all your hearts. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Braswell, other school board members, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. My name is Lane Bird. I reside at 8107 Lee Jackson Circle in the Chancellor District. I come here tonight in support of Dr. Baker's proposed budget for the 2019-20 fiscal year, and that support comes from two major perspectives that I'd like to share a little bit with you. My first perspective is as the proud father of five children, all who are now older and products of Spotsylvania County Public Schools. Their K-12 education I propose is a foundation for their current successes and the successes for them to come. My oldest daughter will board a plane tomorrow morning and fly from Atlanta, Georgia, back to her graduate school program. For the past week, she served as a team from her school in Super Bowl operations. She'll graduate in May with two master's degrees from Ohio University, generally considered one of the top universities in sport administration in all the country. My oldest son, in less than two weeks, will graduate from the Virginia State Police Academy and begin service in Stafford County as one of Virginia's finest after graduating last summer from Virginia Military Institute. My youngest two twins are freshmen at Virginia Tech in Blacksburg, Virginia, where their mom and dad met many years ago. They're off to a great start. Go Hokies! My middle daughter has aspirations to enter the education field and aspires to one day become an educator working with students with special needs. I believe that all kids in Spotsylvania County Public Schools are entitled to the same high-quality education to provide them similar opportunities to my own children, which brings me to my other perspective and my other 935 kids. As you know, I'm the proud principal of Spotsylvania Middle School, the largest middle school in the county by student enrollment, home of the blue and gold and Bulldog Pride, where I've been fortunate enough to serve for the past eight-plus years as principal. I'd like to share a bit of the reality at Spotsylvania Middle School in recent times as I speak in favor of two specific aspects of Dr. Baker's proposed budget. First, the additional positions recommended to address what I consider our most valuable resources for our students, our staff. It is extremely difficult in this current climate, this day and age, to meet the growing needs and demands of each and every year. That would be even if the numbers remain steady, as they are remaining steady and even dropping off a bit in some of our schools. But here's a look at the reality at Spotsylvania Middle School. We currently serve 935 students in grades six, seven, and eight. 340 alone in eighth grade. That number was as low as 780 total students as recently as less than four years ago in a building with a capacity of 907. Again, that's 935 students in a building with a capacity of 907. We have building needs, yes we do. We hope that the capital improvement plan in years to come will address some of those needs, and we've been told that once the Cortland High School renovation is complete, we might be next on the list. We're certainly hopeful. However, our greatest needs at SMS do not involve our building; they involve our staffing. We need help. We need help in general education, where we have classes of 29 and 30 students in several academic classrooms. That is indeed a challenge. We need help in special education, where we have 115 or more students with disabilities who require individualized education plans. Collaboratively, our general ed and special ed teachers meet these needs. That does not even mention the 40-plus students that we have who require 504 accommodations. We need help in counseling. When I was hired as the principal, there were three counselors at each middle school, one per grade level. We currently, and for the last several years, have had two counselors. That puts our ratio of students to counselors at 470 to 1. 470 to 1. Along with a part-time social worker, our two counselors work very hard to meet the needs of all of our students. We need help in administration. Like the six other middle schools in the county, we have one assistant principal, and try as he may to get involved in instruction as he's charged to do. His day consists more often than not of mostly behavioral management and student discipline, a ratio of 940 students to one assistant principal. We need help in school safety, and Dr. Baker's middle school health and safety officers that are proposed will help to assure parents of maximum security at Spotsylvania Middle School for their students while under our care. I'm not exactly sure what Spotsylvania Middle School would be slated in terms of positions' assistance, but I expect some help to come our way from the additional positions if approved. I realize that we are only one piece of the puzzle in Spotsylvania County Public Schools, that's 30-some schools. I'd also like to speak in favor of a second piece of Dr. Baker's recommended budget, and that's the 5% pay increase for all staff.
Mr. Bird, forgive me for interrupting, but I want to let you know that your time has expired. Would you like to request additional time from the board?
I would, Dr. Martin.
Motion, give extra time.
The procedure for the additional time, as per Robert's Rules of Order, is that it would be moved and seconded with a supermajority. So I just want to make sure we understand that. So we have a motion by Mr. Twig, second by Ms. Phelps. We'll call for the vote. We'll start with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Mayor, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Twig, aye.
Grant, aye.
And the chair, aye, 7-0. Please continue.
Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to speak in favor of Dr. Baker's 5% pay increase for all staff. The reality at Spotsylvania Middle School proudly has been low turnover since I began eight years ago. I consider myself blessed to only be able to speak of two in-year resignations in my first seven years at SMS, but times, they are changing. This year, five licensed personnel resignations is our reality since the school year started, almost all involving changes in career choice driven by mostly financial implications. So I'm asking you to equip me and the other 30-some principals and other administrators in Spotsylvania County to do what I consider to be the most important task of my job, which is to go out and find the brightest and the best to fill our classrooms for our students. I ask that you take the difficult and necessary steps to make us as competitive as possible for the coming school year. I want to thank each of you for your general support of our schools, and in particular, for your support of Spotsylvania Middle School. For the sake of our students at SMS, I ask you to fully support Dr. Baker's proposed budget for 2019-2020. Go Bulldogs!
Good evening to Dr. Baker, Mr. Martin, and the school board. Renee Beverley, Battlefield District, Spotsylvania Education Association President. To all the educators who spoke before me, thank you. I believe your message was heard. Courthouse Road Elementary, you look great in red. And all other people that wore red tonight as well. Thank you, Dr. Baker, for your proposed budget, which includes 5% for all educators and other funding for our schools. Although challenges lay ahead, we are supportive tonight and will be at the Board of Supervisors meeting supporting you as well. We talk about retaining educators. Let this be an indicator of what needs to be done. It's not the pay itself, but how it's applied. 5% makes a big difference, yes. We deserve this needs-based budget. Again, thank you, Dr. Baker, for your continued support in advance for educators and our students of Spotsylvania County. On behalf of the SCA, I thank you fully, I ask that you fully fund the recommended budget proposed by Dr. Baker. Thank you.
I am Lisa Amor. I vote in the Lee Hill District. I'm also a proud paraeducator at Lee Hill Elementary School. My comments tonight are twofold. First, I'm going to turn this way. Dr. Baker, I just want to thank you with all my heart for the wonderful budget you proposed. It is robust, creative, and addresses the needs facing all our students, staff, and schools today. The addition of staff, increased building security, the exciting addition of the Future Educators Academy, and the increase in staff compensation show your commitment to our children in Spotsylvania County. I applaud you and fully support your vision. Now, I turn to the school board members. Good evening. Each and every one of our students deserves the opportunity to be college and career-ready by the time they graduate. All students are entitled to an equitable education achieved through quality instruction and targeted programs. It is essential we meet the needs of our diverse community. Our children deserve to learn in safe, modernized buildings. They deserve the most up-to-date materials and equipment. Every child deserves easy access to mental health and social work professionals. And in order to implement all this, our kids need increased levels of staffing with high-quality employees who are paid a competitive salary. This budget was created to benefit all our students, and it will serve them well. Your priority should be the children and all the necessary things that are necessary to achieve their successes. As a Spotsylvania County resident, educator, parent, and voter, I urge you to support our children by supporting this budget. Thank you so much.
My name is Megan Jackson, and I live in the Lee Hill District. I'm a parent to three children in Spotsylvania Schools, and in a few years, four children. I just want to say that I support your budget, Dr. Baker, 100%, every single part of it. I haven't been able to attend meetings this year, but I've been watching at home. I watched the entire presentation and was impressed with the detail and breakdown of each item. Our children deserve the best, and those working for them do as well. I don't think anyone should feel afraid to ask for this funding. However, what we should be afraid of is the interest of those who are uninterested in striving for the best for Spotsylvania County Public Schools and its children. I hope all board members, especially my representative, supports this budget as it accurately depicts the needs of all children in Spotsy schools, including raises, because, of course, we want the best teaching our babies. I also want to just quickly thank all of you for your support towards my request for increased security last year's budget. It has not gone unnoticed. That's it. Thank you.
It's Tamara. Sorry. It's a lifelong problem. I wanted to thank you all for allowing me the time to speak. I spoke before, and I've written you all before, and I want to thank you again for indulging me. I want to thank Dr. Baker and his staff for all they do at BOD time and throughout the year. Oh, I'm going to tear up because I saw Tedra. It's with professionalism and positivity that they deal with the day-to-day issues, the budget constraints, and parents like me. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the teachers here, because it seems to always come up about who... I'm speaking this evening to thank Dr. Baker for putting forth a needs-based budget. The time of cutting corners, scaling back, and letting needs go unmet is long past. I was especially pleased to hear Dr. Baker use the term dyslexia and identify it as an area of need. One in five students and people have this different wiring of the brain that causes an unexpected reading struggle in children with average to above-average intellect. I spoke last year about my son, who had been recently diagnosed with dyslexia and the need for better identification, programs, and teacher training. Since then, my eight-year-old daughter was also diagnosed. So while one in five have dyslexia nationally, two out of my five children have dyslexia. I ask you to support Dr. Baker's budget, which will move Spotsylvania County schools a step closer to giving every child an opportunity to learn to read. The extra staff requested and funding for programs or training are not only essential, but I believe they're required to meet the federal child find regulations, which require the identification of students with disabilities and providing a free and appropriate education to them. I applaud Dr. Baker for championing this cause, which will ultimately save the county money. And this is to the Board of Supervisors. A far more expensive option would be to invest in new jails. Over fifty percent of inmates cannot read. They cannot fill out job, job applications or are, and are at risk of recidivism. Additionally, children not taught to read in K through three will need more costly reading interventions and other supports. It takes four times as long to remediate if identification is delayed beyond third grade. That's four times the cost if you don't start helping these children now. As I mentioned previously, the child find law gives schools an affirmative duty to identify all students with a disability. Not locating and providing those students with a free and appropriate education endangers your federal funding, and a cumbersome complaint process is possible. On that note, I have also asked my U.S. Senators and Congresswomen to fully fund IDEA, and I have advocated on the state level to properly fund education and to provide the tools, training, and teachers needed to ensure all children receive equal opportunities. Beyond the hard dollar cost of continuing to ignore this problem are the individual costs to families like mine struggling to figure out why their children cannot read when teachers tell them they have bright kids, and the damage being done to the students. The girls out there like my daughter, who says she's stupid. The boy like my son, who thinks he's done something wrong and who's trying so hard and who's told just to read more when that's not an appropriate way to deal with dyslexia. They think they are bad or defective. They need more teachers, they need more teachers properly trained, and they need more programs for students with reading struggles and structured literacy. My hope is you will all support Dr. Baker's needs-based budgets as a great first step to ensuring all will have the opportunity to learn to read. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Baker, Chairman Braswell, members of the school board, colleagues and coworkers in the audience, and any members of the community who are watching. My name is Peter Fortenauer, and I live and vote in the Battlefield District. I have waited to see a budget like this for ten years. In real dollars adjusted for inflation, the state of Virginia today spends less money per pupil than it did in 2008 before the recession. Educators have waited far too long for that trend to begin reversing, and Dr. Baker's proposed budget is a first step in a process of beginning to do that for Spotsylvania It is a needs-based budget, but I'm here to talk about a couple of needs that I think need additional help in this budget. The substitute crisis and shortage in this county cannot be understated. And anytime at a middle school where I teach that a substitute cancels or does not pick up an opening, that means that there are teachers in the building who are already working with an overloaded plate, who have overcrowded classrooms, not enough planning time, who are putting hours in after school on their own time, now have to spend part of their planning time helping to cover someone else's classroom, not through any fault of theirs, but because no one, you can't leave the students with no adult in the room. And everyone knows this, but I'm not sure that you can fully understand the impact unless you are one of those teachers who suddenly finds out at the last minute that you have half as much time to get ready for the next day as proposed. My understanding is, is that the rate of unfilled substitute positions is not the same at every school, and I would encourage the board to investigate whether or not certain locations in the county need to have an additional stipend added on to the proposed increase in the substitute pay to help deal with the increased number of unfilled vacancies at those schools. The pay raise for substitutes, even with that, we still will pay less than Stafford and Fredericksburg for certain situations. As for the pay raise for all staff, it is well-deserved. People have spoken to it, and if you don't think that every employee of Spotsylvania County Public Schools deserves a five percent pay raise, come spend a day with them. Come see what we do, how we manage to make ends meet in classrooms where there are too many students, too many needs, and too many demands. We have been redlining our Corvette for the last ten years. We have floored the gas, and we have been running at higher-than-recommended RPMs. So I would also like to suggest that the number of positions in the budget is not enough. Why are we not hiring at least one new teacher per building? Why are we not proposing enough new paraeducator positions for every school to receive one instead of leaving Mr. Bird and other principals sitting in the audience, hoping that their school will be one of the schools that receives one of those precious new positions if the Board of Supervisors funds them? You have a tough road ahead of you, and all of us need to be able to help. Luckily, things are looking better at the state level, as yesterday, both the House and Senate Finance Committees brought forward budget proposals that include almost all of Governor Northam's proposed funding. However, they are already playing games with when the raises would go into effect during the calendar year. And we all know that state funding usually comes with a requirement of a local match. It is very possible that the solutions to many of the things Dr. Baker has proposed in the budget will be approved by the state, particularly the increase in social workers and guidance counselors. But if our locality does not come up with the required funding for a match, we will not receive state funds from the budget. So I feel like I'm preaching to the choir a bit tonight, because the people who control the money are not in the room. Well, let me rephrase that. The people who distribute the money are not in the room. The people who control how much money the schools will receive are in the room, because they are the taxpayers and the voters and the citizens of Spotsylvania County. And I hope that everyone here will realize that tonight is the first step in a process that will last anywhere from two to three months, as you all work on the budget and then present it on February 12th to the Board of Supervisors. They will then determine the advertised tax rate for the county, which is a maximum. They cannot go above that. They can always lower the advertised rate, but they can't go above it. And then ultimately, there will be a public hearing for citizens to comment.
Mr. Fortenauer, forgive me for interrupting, just want to let you know your time has expired.
My time's always expired.
Would you like to request additional time from the board?
No, I'm ready to wrap up. Thank you. I wish you good luck on your work. I know it will be difficult, and please know that you have the support of your employees and the community behind you, because we know the needs, and we thank you, Dr. Baker, for presenting a number of them to the board to be filled.
Mr. Chairman, that's all the speakers that signed up.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the board? I see a gentleman here. Yes, sir. You, and you come first.
Anthony LaFaro and I reside in the Chancellor District. First, I wanted to thank Dr. Baker and those of the board that have been supportive of this budget thus far for being so ambitious, and to say that I really like the specialty center concept, that this is the kind of innovative and forward-thinking type of concepts that we need. I was a person who did both career and technical education, a two-year program at the end of high school, and fulfilled all the requirements to go to college. It wasn't easy. These types of concepts really allow students to pursue a broader range of options, whether they go to college or not. They have options, and they get a much broader sense of what they need to do to prepare for the future, but also taking those steps at an earlier stage. Going through high school is kind of like navigating a maze. With this kind of a concept, it's more like being put into a well-developed algorithm, where if you kind of hit one point where you keep going, can't go forward, you know where to turn next. We need more of that in public education, and I think this is absolutely great. And of all the things that we're looking at, I think that is on the top of my list of support. So is the, the new teacher program. I can't understand why anybody wouldn't want to see that, especially when we're consistently battling shortages of teachers every year. And, you know, all the talk about needs-based budgeting. If there's anything I've learned from the last few years of following this process, it's that there are far greater needs than, than we, than, than the typical layperson looking at this from the outside realizes. And every year, there's certain needs that are prioritized, and then we're all happy because, oh, we got that through the Board of Supervisors this year, and other needs fall behind, and then we got to play catch-up. So I am happy that there is a bold and ambitious budget being put forward, and I support the entirety of it, because I think it is all necessary, especially the new positions as well. I can't understand how the Board of Supervisors could expect level funding, when last year the positions that were approved, it was made very clear through multiple discussions that this was like the bare minimum. I even remember scoffing at my own supervisor for trying to suggest they spread it out over three years, when I'd have been explaining to him that those positions were to support a dramatic increase in students with special needs, and the ripple effects that those have on not only those students, but guidance counselors, helping other educators, paraeducators, and so forth. And when it comes to teacher pay, the Evergreen Study, the third-party independent study that was done clearly stated that there would be, in the option that was chosen, that you put forward that was approved last year, there would need to be three-year, year-over-year increases in pay to bring teachers up to par. I didn't sign up originally to speak. I had to come in kind of late, because I had to wait for my wife to get home, who's a teacher, before I could come here. And that's the same for any time I've ever come to speak at a, a school board meeting, a Board of Supervisors hearing, or most of my weekdays. In fact, I often go to school to pick up my daughter, who goes to the same school my wife teaches at, so that she can continue working till like 6:30 at night. I think that's absolutely essential to reward our teachers, but also to retain them. A lot of attention is given to the possibility of going, teachers going to schools north of here. What about south? Last year, after teacher pay was brought up, I looked at Henrico County, Hanover County, Chesterfield County, where I lived in Henrico before I moved here. And the cost of living there is about the same, and they make a lot more money. And if I was a teacher that was commuting up here from Caroline County, well, you know what? There's no direct, there's no traffic going south. I drive that route all the time. That's where all my business contacts are. So we have more than just Fairfax and Prince William to compete with. That is not something to be taken lightly, and I don't want to see our great teachers leaving, because what we can realize based on what our needs are and this ambitious budget being put forth, is that a lot of teachers have been doing more with less for many, many years, and we simply can't accept that anymore. And our students deserve better. Our children deserve the most. These specialty center concepts do that. And you know what? Every year, this board does a good job, at least the majority, of advocating for more money from the Board of Supervisors. You put forth the budget that you think is necessary to meet the, the needs of our students, of our children, and we will stand behind you and fight. I'm glad there's so many banned parents. I had no idea how much it costs to be banned. Now I do. And I've been in other organizations where fundraising is hard, and it's getting more competitive. And now they're here to know that budgeting is a consistent problem in this, in this county. And all the detractors that I know are going to show up at the joint sessions and the Board of Supervisors hearing, all the ones that never want to see more money committed to schools, even though every time we get more money for schools, it still makes up a smaller percentage of our budget, which tells us what they're doing with the rest of our money? All those people, you notice they're not here.
Sir, forgive me for interrupting, just want to let you know your time has expired. Would you like to request additional time?
Just like ten more seconds, thirty seconds. They're not here. They never are at the school board meetings. There was a huge, huge variance last year between what was being asked of, by parents here, and what was taking place at the Board of Supervisors in terms of people speaking in the couple of public comment periods there. They're not here tonight. And every year, all their excuses as to why we shouldn't fund schools often are completely off-base, sometimes are completely fabricated, and lack merit in general. And it's because they're not paying attention, because they don't care whether our students are treated right. They don't care about what the necessities are. They care about their tax rate, and they don't even understand what's implicating it other than schools. Go forward, and we will fight behind you.
Is there someone else in the audience that would like to, please, sir, come down?
My name is Paul Shellhammer. I reside and vote in the Chancellor District here in Spotsylvania County. As I was thinking about all the different things I wanted to talk about and bring up in support of Dr. Baker's budget this evening, I was using my phone and jot down some notes and so forth, and I thought about how my phone has become everything in what I do, and it's, sorry to, to admit that, but I use it for a million different things. It's my map, it's my phone, it's my email, it's my way to communicate with the outside world. It gives me restaurant recommendations, a million different things that I can't think of at the top of my head, because I'm just a little bit nervous talking right now. Then I thought about how much that's like we now are asking of our teachers. Teachers don't, don't, don't just teach anymore. They're counselors, they're tutors, they are, sorry, I wrote a couple things down. They're babysitters, if you've ever been a substitute teacher like I have, they're babysitters, they're life coaches, they're sounding boards, they're teaching etiquette, they're teaching manners, and all these things that aren't in the, aren't in the things that they get set up and paid for. And all this, we ask them to do after hours, on weekends. We ask them to go to purchase their own supplies sometimes, because they feel that's the best way they're going to be able to teach their kids. Then we tell them to go to school after hours, and in their, in their off-time, to go maintain their certifications, all while giving them changing safety and legalese boundaries every year. Things change. Can't do this, can't do this, can't do that. Well, we complain about the cost of cell phones, but they do a lot of different things for us. And on the teacher side and on the tax side, for those of you who are against spending any amount of money on, on raising salaries for teachers, I would say this to you. Maybe I can say it in terms you might understand. To get the best teachers, you have to pay them well. What does having top-level schools do for every homeowner in this county? It raises property values. Raising salaries for our teachers is an investment in our homes, in our land, and most importantly, in our children. Make the investment. We'll be there at the Board of Supervisors meeting. Thank you.
Please come down. Please come down.
Good evening. My name's Mandy Hester. I guess you could call me a potential resident of Spotsylvania County, but I am the current principal at Spotsylvania High School. Chairperson Braswell, Dr. Meyer, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin, and all the members of the Board, I want to tell you that I appreciate the opportunity to thank you. You may not be aware of this gentleman named Simon Sinek. He's a motivational speaker and someone that provides training on leadership. And the following is a quote from him. "Leadership is not about being in charge. Leadership is about taking care of those in your charge." And I want to thank you for developing a thoughtful budget that includes multiple components that are designed to take care of those who are in your charge. Most importantly, I want to thank you, and especially, for support that you are providing our nights and all our future nights. This support provides additional academic opportunities for all of our students as well as our staff. But in reality, this budget stands to provide and support all Spotsylvania students and staff. I believe this quote is an important message, but I also believe that it's important at this budget season. We all know that budgets are the financial representation of our priorities. We also know that it is a difficult task requiring delicate balances. The budget in its current form represents your priority of putting our students and those that you are in charge of first. And what I mean by that is you are addressing the needs identified by those deeply embedded and intimately knowledgeable of the process in providing the support in those areas, especially the support of your staff. This support comes in the form of proposed raises, whether they be for teachers, staff, bus drivers, custodians, or substitute teachers, and that is with no increases of insurance or costs, as well as proposed increases in staff at different sites or even new positions. Again, teachers, counselors, social workers, SSOs in some instances, SROs, and discipline support. These requests are not frivolous or unreasonable. They are necessary to keep, as Dr. Baker says frequently, "the main thing, the main thing," and that is to provide the opportunity for our students to reach their best and to be successful in whatever pathway they choose. I think there is and needs to be a continued understanding and trust that as a profession and as individuals in education, we put our students first. While we are not perfect, we have committed our lives to our students. Just ask any family member or any friend that is around an educator. All we talk about is school, and we can't help it. It is our life 24/7, and they are our kids. Accountability levels and expectations placed on educators are outstanding. There are few professions where the accountability standards, whether they are for things inside their control or outside of their control, that are as great as educator standards. And these individuals are accepting of that responsibility, and that responsibility of providing our children, our students, with the best possible opportunity for them to be successful. Moreover, our staff is highly educated, certified, and credentialed, which is not only essential to be effective, but it is also requirement for the job. This education, as well as required continuing education, takes time and money. Our teachers, our educators, prepare our students for the rest of their life and future jobs. If you think about it, none of you would be sitting there, nor would anybody operating on this budget if it weren't for an educator. We have the job that prepares people for all other jobs. With this in mind, I ask you to not only support the financial capital, I ask you to support the human capital. Support a budget that allows our students to have opportunities to make them competitive, whether college, career, or in the military market. Educators to do their job and to have time to do their jobs while also being able to support their families. After all, Spotsylvania County Public Schools School Board is the largest employer of the county, and this is in addition to accepting the responsibility for the residents' most prized possession, their children. I appreciate that you are attempting to support those who impact our kids the most in the budget. I appreciate your support of Spotsylvania High School, and more importantly, I appreciate the leadership in taking care of those who are in your charge. Thank you.
Please come down, sir.
Good evening, leaders in education. My name is Gary Sexton. I live in the Lee Hill District.
Would you be sure to speak into the microphone? Thank you.
I'm proud to serve as a member of an incredible team of educators at Courthouse Road Elementary School. I spent 27 years in the Army, and it helped me become the man that I am today in many ways. But hanging out in a self-contained autistic classroom with 10 3rd to 5th grade kids has made me a better grandfather. I came into that world at about the same time that God provided our family three grandchildren. I sometimes tell my extended family that I'm in Gold's Gym for granddads. If you can spend time with kids whose way of looking at life and problems and themselves and one another has unique challenges, you find that they have been blessed with a uniqueness that requires me to grow. And I serve with three other team members, two other parent educators and a lead teacher, committed to their calling, committed to the children in that classroom. But there are not enough of us. And the budget that has recommended that we plus up the staff with parent educators, not only in the general education world, but in the special education world, is a brilliant example of a listening leader who has heard the needs of the people and who has acted by putting it in language and in format that can go to the Board of Supervisors and appeal to their good sense and commitment to our community and to give us the money we need to plus up the team that serves the kids in our community. The Courthouse Road Cardinals came in tonight in Cardinal red. It's a beautiful color, but they come with the spirit of eagles. It's the sharpness of their perception that has helped me understand these wonderful kids whose unique ways of solving problems and asking for their needs to be met and to join one another in community, that has made me a better person. And I'm hoping that this budget will provide for others the opportunity to be blessed like I have as parent educators and as citizens and neighbors to those. I don't need the money as a 27-year Army active officer retired. I do it because I want to give back to the community. And there are three grandchildren who are about to enter into the schools of Spotsylvania County, and I want them to have the best opportunity to develop all that they are and who they are because they've been capable, caring, and enough team members to help them with their life choices and their life experiences. I hope that this Board of Education will engage the Board of Supervisors like a Roman Phalanx, that you will not be broken, that you will be moving online with purpose and conviction to ask for what our children deserve. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the gentleman for his service. I'm an Air Land Battle Officer myself. Is there another that would like to address the Board? Please, ma'am.
I wasn't prepared for this, though. All right. So, good evening, Dr. Baker and members of the Board. My name is Margarita McBride. I reside in the Cortland High School District, and I'm currently an employee of Spotsylvania County. I'm speaking on behalf of Cortland Marching Band. My daughter has been in the marching band now for three years, and before marching band, she was a quiet girl that wouldn't, that would just go to school and come home and didn't have much to say. She was in the shell, okay? Because of marching band, she's come out of her shell and has developed this confidence that as a parent, I'm proud to say that the Cortland Band has done this. The friendship that she has made between the students, the marching band, and the parents is going to last a lifetime. As a family, we budget marching band. It's crazy, we do, but it's hard. Not everybody can do that. We fundraise, and it's difficult. Raising $400 to $500 budgets, twice, because she does the winter drum line as well. So we budget that. It's hard, but she loves it. And if she loves it, we do what we can. I thank you for investing in the band for my daughter and for all the other band students. I'm glad this budget's being proposed. Thank you.
Will there be another? We see none, and we will close public hearing and move to opening comments by Mr. Baker. Excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I just thank a lot of the folks that have come out tonight, and it's humbling to, humbling and rewarding to serve such a fine staff and community, and I appreciate their input this evening. But I don't, you've heard enough from me over the last few meetings, so I am at this point going to ask my team to come up, if that's okay with you, Mr. Braswell, and have them ready to answer any initial questions. And I will turn it back over to you to turn it over to Ms. Gaines to share some closing slides. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. And what we'd like to do, Ms. Gaines, I'm assuming you have several slides for us to review. What we're going to do is review the slides, and then we'll open. Time for questions. Do we, do we need a short recess, Board?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We're going to call for a short recess. The time is 7:52. We will resume at 8 o'clock. We have a recess. Okay, we'll go ahead and continue with our presentation. If we could have Ms. Gaines lead us in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Braswell, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Staff is delighted to be where we are in this year's 2020 budget development process. You will recall, November 26, we did have a pre-budget work session. Last Monday, the superintendent, he did present his proposed budget to the school board, and then last Wednesday, we had a detailed budget work session. So this evening, staff's presentation will be very brief. We do want to allow enough time for school board discussion. So if I can please have the floor computer. So this evening, we've had opening comments from our superintendent. We're going to talk to you a little bit about a few slides. We'll turn it over to you for the consensus, and we'll speak to next steps, and we'll have closing comments. So we want to remind you very quickly, what were the goals in the superintendent's recommended budget? Goal number one, very important, attracting, retaining, and investing in high-quality teachers and staff. Budget priority number two, increasing student learning and achievement. And finally, goal number three, supporting safe, engaging, and equitable learning environments. So what is the fiscal impact of the proposed budget coming from our superintendent? This is what I would like to call our lead sheet. Here, you basically see compensation and related investments, 10.3, other compensation investments, supplemental pay, reclasses, cafeteria managers, monitors, which will be paid from the food service budget, transportation allocation for band, et cetera, 501,000. Student support investments, 149 positions, 8.6 million, and then non-compensation investments to include band uniforms, 3.1. Now, what is the details of the compensation investment? Here, you will see the 5% pay increase for all staff, and we're so pleased this evening to share that there's no health insurance increase. The total for this initiative is 9.1 million, and we have 4.6 million coming from the state. We are in the process of waiting for the crossover. We're hopeful to have that information hopefully no later than February the 7th. The Evergreen Implementation Study, year two of three, 552,000. A 5% increase in academic and athletic stipends, 101,000. A $10 rate increase for subrates, 229,000. Custodian hourly rate increase from $10 an hour to $11.50 an hour, 219,000. Increase in teacher hourly rate increase from $25 to 30, 39,000. And then we want to be able to put in the budget employee tuition reimbursement in the non-comp area, 500,000, for a total investment of 10.3. So what are some of the details of the other compensation investments? Here, the first item you'll see, all of our elementary schools, if they have more than 500 students, they will receive a third cafeteria monitor for 77,000. The high school band transportation supplement to include FICA, 53,000. We currently have web-curated stipends at both the middle school and the high school level. So an increase here of all 17 elementary schools in two of our centers, $10,000. Our high school clinical assistant, basically taking them from five days, five hours per day to 7.5 hours a day to meet the needs of our students, 46,000. Supplemental pay increases as it pertains to various subs, et cetera, and then contract length changes, reclasses, 47,000. So that's your total there for other compensation investments and student support, 501,000. Then here, you'll see basically two slides, which make up the 149 investments in terms of human capital. You basically see the details there. We did share that with you on January the 28th, and again, we did share this information with you at our last work session on November the 30th. And you also have a hard copy in your packet that's before you. So that's 139. For the total, 149, you see additional 11 positions on this particular slide, and you can see the details here. And then the last part of the budget are your non-compensation investments. We talked a little earlier about your tuition reimbursement for our employees, administration, non-comp, contract supplies, and professional development, attendance and health. You're looking at contracts and medical equipment, transportation, the band transportation, fuel, GPS costs, maintenance, custodial supplies, increases in utilities, and then you're looking at instructional technology. Here in this number, you see 300,000 for school-based allocations. You see another 285,000 for Lexia software, and another 250,000 for ParaSchool. So this number is going up primarily to support our students and our schools. And then finally, you'll see the increase in our debt service, 800,000, and this particular number supports, which you see on Slide number 11, which is our proposed CIP, and we're focusing on 2020, and you'll see 28.9 there. And this presentation was provided by Mr. Upperco. So finally, based on where we are today and looking at our total revenues, and this is focused on the operating fund, because all your other funds, Fund One, which is your Common Wealth Governor School, your Fund Two, which is your Juvenile Detention Center, your Fund Three, which is our food service program, and your Fund Four, which is adult ed, all of those funds, for the most part, are self-sufficient. So the gap that you have this evening at this time for Fund Five is 12.350. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. At this time, what we will do is if you have any questions in particular to the slides that you see before you, we will entertain opportunities to answer questions in regards to those slides. When we move on to discussion and consensus, if you will, we will provide each board member an opportunity to not only give any indication of where they are at in their decision-making, whether they're for, against, or still on the fence, they will have the opportunity to do that at that time. And then they'll also address 4.0102. And then they'll also address 4.01, 02, and 03 at one time. I already gave Mr. Twig his warning order. He will be going first, so he's had an opportunity to compose himself to do that, and I would ask the other board members to engage in that way. So at this time, from my colleagues, do we have any questions in regards to the slides that were presented by Ms. Gaines? None? Okay. Then we'll move on to school board discussion. We'll start with Mr. Twig, and then Ms. Phelps, and we're going to work from the inside out. So it'll be Mr. Blaine, and then Dr. Meyer, and Ms. Gramps, and then Ms. Shelley and I will finish. Mr. Twig, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you. First of all, I gratefully appreciate everybody's perspectives this evening. I appreciate this comprehensive list of funding requests, issues that we all care about, and at some point, somewhere on the spectrum, we can use the service and the positions or the material. And certainly, it'll be a challenge to provide all or most of that, yet we will put forth a due diligence effort toward that end. And I've spoken with Ms. Gaines and Dr. Baker about a couple of financial things, a couple of points of reference on our slides and our data points on the budget line items, so we don't have to go over that again right now. And we'll just plug away and do our best to service our community regarding the budget. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Twig, do you want to address the CIP and human resources recommendations for positions at this time?
No further questions or issues.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Phelps.
I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight and the Cortlandt Road Elementary School team. It was nice to see everybody together, all the teachers. I do concur, I think it was the pre-budget meeting where Ms. Shelley had mentioned that this year's budget gap is going to be challenging. I think that was her words. I didn't exactly write them down, but I remember how I could identify with what she said. And I will stress that I did send, did I send you, you have the answers to the questions that I sent probably while I was on my way here. So I didn't realize, but I'll go back through the budget line items that you could address. And there was, so last year was $321 million. Am I right? Or is it 321? And this year, so was there the $6 million? Are we getting additional $6 million from the state?
So in total, Ms. Phelps, if you look at the state funding coming from state funds, it's about 6.1 million, and then the funding coming from sales tax is 1.1. So the total amount is about 7.7, and that does cross all funds. And that's probably one of the largest increases we've seen in a few years. And as indicated by Dr. Baker, initially, the second year of the biennium, we were supposed to get 3.5, and the mere fact that we're getting double that is very impressive.
Right. That's what I noticed when I was looking at the governor's proposed budget and going through line item page by page to review that. So that would be the answer. I guess that would be in the email also that I sent. Okay. And what else do I have here? So I want to make it clear that I am in full support of bringing our teachers up to where they need to be to market value. And I want to make that clear. Administrators and staff and teachers, that's important for me. So if we want a consensus, that is where my mind is at, and it's not, I'm being very open and transparent about that. Okay? So that is where I'm driving to. If it's 5%, then for the teachers and the whole staff, admin. The reason why I asked that question at our last meeting, and I want to be clear about it, is because I did receive communications from other teachers that don't have the ability because they do work second jobs, and they have small children or older children or activities. And they did discuss that I make $52,000 a year. I've been here for 14 years, assistant principal. What do they make? Do they make over, do they receive 5%, which is a lot, it's a bigger increase than I would get making 52,000. So that's why I brought your attention the last time. It wasn't because I thought that the administrators don't deserve anything, it's because it was brought to my attention from in-house. So I just wanted to share that, to make everybody know that that's where I'm coming from, straight up. And so with that being said, I think about where is the instructional intentions and the funding aligned? And I think Mr. Braswell had mentioned it previously. So when I look at the line item budgets, that's where I go, and I look at the state. And I do know, and correct me if I'm wrong, about four years ago, we put forth a raise. We promised, and I really don't remember the exact year, but we did, the school board did approve a raise for the teachers. We were looking at the state budgets that came in, and then the state, the governor at that time, did not give us the money that, or this school board, the funding to fund that, right? Am I correct? Or?
So that was actually FY 2018, whereby the school board had approved a 2% increase for all staff and statewide. The state did reneg on their promise. Therefore, we had to reallocate funds, because at that point in time, it was in June, and we had already issued contracts to our employees in May. So you're correct. It was FY 2018.
18, okay. That's a huge concern for me. So we go 5% across the board, and then I've been looking at the budget, the governor's budget has not been voted on yet and gone through, although it sounds good and it looks good, but when there are strings attached to it also, right? So the I's and the T's. So that's what I look at when I'm looking at the budget. So I guess I'm going to leave with this, because I'll look at the email that you sent. But one thing that does come to my mind is, when do pilot programs stop being pilot programs? And so I often, I sit here and I think, the teachers is what we need, for me. What we need is the teachers here. And if we can't take care of the teachers first, then how are we going to have the programs? So that's where I'm coming from. I appreciate your time. I'd like nothing better than to have every single budget request funded from departments and what have you, but I'm going to do my due diligence and the best I can, and thank you to everybody who was here.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. Mr. Blaine.
Just a couple of brief comments. Actually, I'd like to thank everybody for their preparation for the presentation that you made. I think every one of the speakers were very helpful to me in terms of giving me the breadth of interest. I generally endorse and in favor of the budget as has been proposed. Couple of areas I would like to see some additional money, very frankly, is in the music area. I think that's an important subject, and it's an activity that, once children get involved at the elementary and intermediate and high school level, it's something that many people carry right through their entire lifetime. It's an activity that music gives for us that is probably unique in that area. The other area that I'm, I think, concerned with as we go down through the budget is the need for more teachers nationwide, not just here, and salaries and so on that are going to retain those teachers in the profession. There's a lot of change going on, jobs coming on the market that a teacher could take easily, and we need to keep our salaries at a level that's going to retain their presence in our teaching staff. And I think that probably concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Baker, I'm really appreciative of the budget that you have presented to us. We're in the first steps of this process, as someone said this evening, where you're presenting to us the needs. I think you did a very, very good job of laying out through goals one, two, and three, and with the basis of what are the needs of our staff and our students. Because you built the groundwork, like someone also pointed out this evening, with the practitioners that are in the field, you consulted with them to arrive at a decision as to, to the extent of the needs that need to be addressed in this budget. We can no longer pick an artificial point and say, well, we can only go up to here on our request, and then everything has to just be decided around that point. It's artificial. I think outlining the needs as you have and identifying it, and hearing from the 20-some, 20-plus speakers this evening, truly highlighted that you did identify the needs, and that our staff is reinforcing that those needs should be requested, should be met, and are being presented to us. And as they're being presented to us as step number two, this school board would act then on next Monday on your proposed budget as to what then we would carry forward the next day, on the 12th, and present to the board of supervisors. Your request is an aggressive one, and I think it truly needs to be because the needs are there, and we have to request those funds. It is a large request, without a doubt, you know, 12.3 million. But if we don't make the request, we'll never have the funds that we need to address our needs, just as at the state level, the needs for additional guidance and social workers has been identified and have been implemented over several years. Likewise, we must do that. And in so doing, going back to the composite index, that all translates back to a local match, and there's no way to avoid it. And we need to ask of our supervisors if these are truly the needs of our students and our staff. And even at the state level, they're putting funds, true, it's on the governor's proposed budget, but again, that's a step in the process. And as we arrive in our end goal come April and May, when we know, well, the end of February, we'll know what the true amount is, provided it doesn't get delayed. But we'll know whether the governor's budget was accepted or not, to what level. And when we go before the supervisors, we should know already, when we have to not just present the budget, but have our joint work session, we should have a good idea of what the parameters are. If we don't make the request, we'll never have it. If we have the needs, we need to present them. We know the costs are high, but there is anticipated at the composite index level that the locality should be matching in order for us to fulfill those needs, whether it's the 5% or whether it's additional guidance and social workers. I am definitely in favor of this budget. I know it's asking a lot, but we have the needs, and we're obligated under the Constitution to present those needs, advocate for those needs. It's interesting that when I wasn't here at the last meeting and I was in DC, I was advocating, because as a school board member, we are to be advocates for the educational needs. I was advocating for special education. It used to be 94142, now it's, you know, IDEA, which was approved in 1975 to be 40% funding. It's never been 40. Highest ever was 18. It was last authorized in 2004. So it's 15 years since it's been reauthorized. And the whole push from the National School Boards Association, of which we're a part, that we should be advocating now and speaking with our legislators. So the whole purpose of going to DC was to speak with Senators Kane and Warner, and our representatives, Congresswoman Spanberger and Congressman Whitman. And we had conferences, we had some very, very good conferences with those folks, and laid out that funding level we truly need to have so that it can assist and take the burden off the locality. But we're not there yet, but we need to be advocating for it, or we'll never get it. Likewise, we need to be advocating at the local level, or we'll never get it. We have to have the funding to address our needs, and we have to retain our staff, we have to have additional staff, and we have our non-compensation areas. And I think, Dr. Baker, in summary, you've presented the three goals, you've justified it, you've made your case, and now it's up to the school board to carry the pail of water, take it to the supervisors, and ask for the funding that we need to fulfill these needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Ms. Grant.
Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody who spoke tonight. I think that was the biggest turnout at a public hearing that I've had since I've been on the board, so it was really encouraging to have all those people participating. I hope that they stay active throughout the budget process, because as it seems to go on and on and on, we seem to have less support, because people start to lose their ambition, because they think it goes away. But we're still advocating, and we would like for the public to continue to advocate for their priorities. I just want to start out by saying that the budget process we go through in this county is very backwards. And as people were praising Dr. Baker tonight for looking within his school system, asking what the needs are, and then developing a budget based on the needs for us to look at and present, that's how I argue that we all do budgets, in a home and at businesses. You find out what your needs, and then you just construct a budget, and then you figure out a way to fund it, right? In our county, it doesn't work that way. And every year since I've been on the board, we are told to expect level funding. Well, so every budget season, we go through a descriptive process of how our needs are changing, how our demographics are changing, how all of our demands are changing, how we need, we might not be growing in numbers, but we're growing in needs. And those needs are taken care of with human capital. And you cannot meet those needs of your ever-growing population on level funding. It's, you cannot meet the unfunded mandates that the state and federal government continue to pass. We cannot meet the needs of the guidance counselor mandate, the social worker mandate, the suggested EL ratio. We cannot meet those needs without hiring more people, and that costs money. So you can't tell us to cut anymore. There's nothing else to cut. So the state, I think, sounds this year, is starting to realize that and give us a little more of an increase, and I hope that our local representatives see the same thing. If not, we're going to be behind other school systems, because they're going to get their local matches. They're not going to turn down their chance to get support from the state to hire much-needed guidance counselors and social workers. But if we don't get the local match, we don't get the state funding. So therefore, we're that far behind districts that we're already behind. So we need, in order to even stay the same in comparison, we need more funding. We can't even keep up at level. We have to have more just to stay the same. So I encourage everybody to stay active in this process and make sure that if education is your priority, that you fight for this budget, because it is a very good budget.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I too want to thank all of the speakers that came out. If my count is correct, there were 21 speakers, and I think I only remember one other time that we had this many or more, and that was before I was on the board. I was actually out there and came to speak. So I- So I want to thank everyone that did come out to speak on behalf of this budget. It is a good budget, and I am thrilled, as I said the other night, about this budget. It brought tears, tears to my eyes. Tonight, some of the speakers, I'm honest, y'all, I wear my heart on my sleeve. I brought, some of the speakers brought tears to my eyes this, this evening as well, talking about their students that have adverse childhood experiences and the numbers of, of the, of those experiences that the students have had. And that's why adding so many social workers and school counselors to our staffs is absolutely amazing and wonderful, and I hope we can continue to do this. I've been asking for years, a couple of years at least, to bring a social worker into every building, and that looks like it's coming to fruition, and I'm thrilled. More counselors, our mental health needs of our students is rising, it's on the rise, but they need people to help them out and get the support. So I think that in itself is huge for me. This budget is completely student-centered. In the education world, we talk about something, instruction being student-centered. Well, without a budget being student-centered, our instruction can't be student-centered. So this budget is completely student-centered. The staff pay increases is student-centered, as I said the other night. If we are going to attract and retain the best and the brightest, we need to be paying them what they're worth or more because we do not need to lose them. We're losing teachers not just to Northern Virginia or to higher-paying teaching positions, we're losing them to the private sector. Because teachers with some specialized degrees and a bachelor's, or most of our teachers have a master's degree, can go to the private sector and make quite a bit more than they are going to be making here. And in the, not just here in Spotsylvania, in the teaching field. So we need to try to start to compete. And we're not going to compete completely with the private sector, I get that, because, but, we can make it, make it more appealing. And make it more appealing for people who want to get, come into the teaching field, those students who are going to college, let's want, make them want to be teachers, the best and the brightest, so they want to come into the education field. And that's another reason I think that our, that our Teacher Cadet Academy is, is a wonderful step in the direction of bringing more people into the education field. This budget also talks about, it has a lot to do with safety of our students, and that has been one of our big priorities, is our student's safety. Well, this budget talks to that. So I am, I am thrilled with all of that. And the, adding to the music program, that's huge. I've mentioned it for a couple of years as well. So seeing that, at least we're starting with transportation and something with uniforms. We've got, we've got a really, Dr. Baker, you brought us a very good budget, and staff. I know, no, because I know you all work together, but thank you so much for bringing this budget to the school board. Those of you who came out to support the budget, I am with you, I support this budget as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Before I launch into the issue of the budget, I want to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Baker. Over the past couple of weeks, he's had to make some really tough calls as it pertains to weather. And I don't envy him in the least bit because he never gets to be a winner in those calls. And if he doesn't, someone is Monday morning quarterbacking him, and if he does, someone is Monday morning quarterbacking him. And I'm honored that he is willing to make a tough decision in spite of demagoguery and other influences that would cause him to do otherwise, because his decisions are always focused on safety first of our children. And we had some situations in other counties where the decision that was made didn't work out so well. And I'm so glad that we don't have to contend with that in this county, because we made tough decisions that focused on children first. So Doc, thank you for your decisions and the decisions that you made in terms of not only weather, but decisions that you make day and, day in and day out here at Spotsylvania County. Thank you, sir. I want to say that I enthusiastically support this budget in every way. As I was thinking of what I should say, I was listening to my colleagues, and they pretty much encapsulated everything that I wanted to say, but I want to paint a different picture. The picture that I want to paint is one that is systemic in this county. Last week, I read an article in the Freelance Star, and it discussed how we are struggling as a county to retain and attract not only police officers but firefighters, that we were spending an inordinate amount of money training them and because our pay was so uncompetitive, that they took the money that we used to train them with and they went to another county to work. When you think about that, that's, that's foolishness, that we would invest in, in folks to do services that we need, but not offer them a competitive salary or compelling salary to stay so that we would be able to receive the benefit of that. Now, we heard a lot of discussion about losing teachers further north, but we're losing them everywhere because they are a scarce commodity. It really gets down to supply and demand. If you have a scarce number of, of, of a certain type of supply, then you're going to have to pay more so that you can have access to that supply. And we know it's not something that is made up, it's a very real problem, and that there aren't very many teachers out there that are qualified to teach. And so we have to do our level best to make sure that we keep, retain, and attract the best and the brightest here at Spotsylvania County, not just so that we can fill spots, but so that our children would be able to glean from their, their gifts. So, so the issue of making sure that we have a competitive salary, not just in terms of, of just salary, but in terms of all benefits, direct and indirect. We've discussed in great detail enhancing stipends, I'm very happy about that, not just because it benefits coaches and athletic programs, but it benefits extracurricular activities throughout Spotsylvania County schools. And it's important that we have our coaches and teachers engaged with our young people in after-school activities. There's great benefit for that investment. But now, as I talk about investment, I want to share with you all, and I just ask you to bear with me for a moment, so I can bring this to light. But I was, I, I've been, for the past 26 years of my life, a financial services professional. I help people on a day-to-day basis with their investments and engage in retirement planning and a variety of other financial planning. And it always befuddles my, my clients when I tell them that an A-share of a particular mutual fund, because it has a load, actually outperforms a B-share that doesn't have a load. Well, where am I going at with this? It's always better to invest on the front end because on the back end, there are very heavy loads, they're called 12B1 fees. And even though you have the impression that because you're not paying a load up front, you believe that you're making more money, and you're not. Well, why do I say that? Not that I'm trying to engage anyone in the battle over taxes, but we always have this impression that we don't need to raise taxes because it's not going to be beneficial to us. And I would argue, the cost to our infrastructure on the back end is significantly higher, and it costs us more to recoup the, the, the damage that goes to our infrastructure. And we need to look at it an entirely different way. It is an empirical fact, and when I show my clients and I lay it out for them, I show them empirically that they make more money with a loaded fund than they do with a no-loaded fund. And it surprises them, but the numbers don't lie. Well, I would tell you that with this budget, it is empirical proof that if we invest on the front end, we are going to get a rate of return that is worth our while. Well, why do I say that? I've already mentioned before that I've come across several students that have matriculated through Spotsylvania County schools, not only at, here recently, but those that, young men have come up to me, they've got beards and stand a lot taller than me, and I'm glad I was good to them. But they say to me all the time, Coach, we need to keep doing what we're doing. Coach, the experiences that I had in Spotsylvania County schools allow for me to be the person that I am today. Some of these young folks are out doing their own thing in the military, they're doing their thing in business, they're doing their thing in college. But what really impresses me is when I see them doing their thing as a father or as a mother. They have taken what we've taught them, and now they're teaching it to the next generation, Spotsylvania County student. So the investment that we make in this budget, the investment that we make in education in Spotsylvania County is going to pay off. See, those young people that are successful and are able to care for themselves, they pay, they pay taxes too. I like it when everybody wants to chip in, and they have an opportunity to chip in because we invested in them. And so I'm going to enthusiastically support this budget. I'm going to do every, I'm going to do my level best to encourage my peers and colleagues on the Board of Supervisors to support and endorse what we're trying to do. And I'm going to continually engage my peers, whether they're for the budget or not, to agree that we believe that Spotsylvania County children are worth the investment. With that being said, I will now offer Dr. Baker an opportunity to make some closing comments before we go, oh, I'm sorry, next steps. Next steps, Ms. Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the slide before you, on Slide 14, it has been alluded to that the next step in the budget process is that the school board will approve its budget on Monday, February the 11th. The following day, you will present to the Board of Supervisors, February the 12th at 4:30, and this meeting will be held at the Hobart Building, which is a different location. Then you will have your joint budget work session with the supervisors on March the 12th at 6:00 PM. And then the supervisors will have their annual budget hearing at Massaponix High School on March 26th at 6:30. And then we'll know the final outcome of the budget on the local side on April the 11th at 6:00 PM. The Board of Supervisors will adopt the budget as well as the tax rates. And then this board here, we're asking that you adopt your budget on April the 15th, which will allow us to get our contracts out to staff in May. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Dr. Baker.
Nothing further other than to thank the, the board for their, the time that they have spent and are spending in analyzing this budget and helping to move it forward when you look to this upcoming Monday. Thank you to Ms. Gaines and our staff for, as you said, I have a lot of great help and great assistance and a, an amazing team. And again, that extends not only to my cabinet, but, you know, beyond that into the staff, many of who were so extremely articulate tonight and represent us so well in their work every single day. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Grant has moved, and Ms. Shelley has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.